Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education. With a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. Just for the community and the public to know, prior to this, we had a work session that we spent about thirty minutes talking about grading from the inside and out, which is about bringing accuracy in student assessment. And we've just, we walked through chapters one through three. Our administrators and cabinet are going through it also at this time. So we thought the board would model learning along with them and learn a little bit more and dig a little deeper into it. So that's what we were doing prior to the meeting. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's been moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments following the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to public comment. We have one?
We do.
Jennifer? Welcome this afternoon, or evening.
Thank you so much to the school council for allowing my public comment at tonight's meeting. I wrote it all down, so it'd be very succinct. What brings me here is simple curiosity. I'm curious if you all as a board are discussing the proposed bill that is likely to be introduced to the upcoming Iowa legislative session regarding school vouchers. It is my understanding that this bill will use tax dollars to support a school voucher system, and I'm curious if the Association of School Boards in Iowa have debated this topic, and if so, what is there and your response? How would this affect our Cedar Falls schools? Has there been discussion with principals and administrators of other schools with members of our board and how it may affect them? I guess I'm nervous about us not being proactive. Perhaps there have been pre-legislative sessions in which you all have been included with documents to be voted on, but if not, would it be possible for our Cedar Falls School Board to do some research on this topic? And perhaps provide a statement, if you will, of how the voucher system could affect our budget, taxable value, state support directly? I am a voter who cares about our school's overall health. I still have one child still in the Cedar Falls school system, and we're very proud to be a part of it. I'm concerned a bill could be passed without study and could potentially hurt our school through lack of clear and detailed understanding. So I look forward to hearing from you, our Cedar Falls School Board, and where you stand on this bill and look forward to your feedback once you've had time to discuss and research it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Moving on to communications, the student board representative, Arlo?
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm glad to be back after break, and our first semester is coming to an end this week, so, yeah. Student Senate has two big projects coming up for the start of the second semester that I'm really excited to talk about and share with you. Our first major event of the year will be our winter dance, the Snowball, which will be held on January 27th at Mocker Union. This is a brand-new event for us, it's our first year doing this. So we've been really busy with trying to promote it and getting everything figured out so that this can hopefully become an annual event. The proceeds from this dance will go to our dance marathon. So we want to, you know, make this a successful event and hopefully put even more money to the University of Iowa Children's Hospital. And after the snowball, we will be having our dance marathon. Our goal in Student Senate this year has really been like community engagement and trying to bring in our local community to the high school in ways that we haven't previously done. So for our dance marathon, we are going to be kind of reworking the event to be open to the community. And in doing that, we're really going to be opening it up to the elementary schoolers and making it kind of a carnival-style night along with the dancing. So we hope to have lots of games and other fun things like that, there'll be prizes. So I'll talk more about that in the coming weeks, but that's something to look forward to in February. And, yeah, if there's any questions, happy to answer.
Are you all ready for finals?
I hope so.
We know you are. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arlo.
Moving on to the newsletter, Janelle.
Maybe before we get there, if that's okay, I just wanted to talk a little bit about Jennifer's comments too. And I think, you know, speaking, I don't want to speak for the board by any means, but I think the voucher program and the legislation is on all of our radar. It's been something that has been, we've had discussions about, we've talked with legislators about. We've gone through different conventions and conferences through with the Iowa Association of School Boards. And it's something that we are, I would say, concerned about at a pretty high level just because of the fact that there are discussions, and again, not specific discussions, we don't know how this is going to play out or what the bill may say, or bills may say. But certainly going to look at diverting public dollars towards private expenditures. And that's something I think the intent of the funding formula, the intent of public education, as we know why and the purpose it was set up and purpose it serves across our nation, certainly across the state of Iowa, I think shouldn't be used to divert money towards other means and other purposes. So very, very important, I think, and I hate to speak for the board, but I, in this case, I'm looking across the table. I think everybody here fully agrees, and I think we are fully able, willing to be able to put dollars to that, but also to be able to speak and advocate that we don't believe that vouchers have a place within our region or should not be in the state.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I think one of the things Jen asked was if we could have some sort of an analysis, like of potential impact. I know that we can't get into like details without knowing the bill yet, but if there was any kind of way that we could even know a range of impact to our district if this legislation was...
That is a great question, but it's so, it's almost impossible to figure out. When we had what was called competent private instruction in the city of Iowa, we knew who was homeschooled. We knew those students because they had accountability majors. They had to go through us for the assessments, or they had to go through the AEA for assessments. Three years ago, they passed something that's called IPI, Independent Private Instruction, where there's no accountability. So we don't know how many students aren't being assessed that are maybe at home that have no connection with any measures of accountability. So we can guess, but we do not know that number. We know that we have a lot of families that would want to come to Cedar Falls as well that might not otherwise be able to come without some more openness with our open enrollment policies and procedures. We don't know, our thoughts are the impact's probably going to potentially increase the number of students that would want to come here if there are completely openness of boundaries. But without knowing what the specific bill would say, it's hard to determine the impact because we don't know if it's going to potentially open up boundaries and allow any student to go where they'd want. There are some discussion about having a ninety percent going towards a voucher of the per pupil allotment at the funding formula and ten percent going to the home district where the student resides. There's also other discussions of, you know, a cap at a certain level. So it's hard to determine, not knowing what the dollar amount they're talking or what the actual bill language would be, because it's just all over the board right now, if that makes sense. So we just, we don't know, especially with IPI. You know, we don't have a large number of students that elect to homeschool. We have a lot of students that choose and families that choose. Not that homeschooling is, again, we want the best option for families when it comes to their schooling. We just don't think public dollars should go to supplant and supplement those choices.
Yeah, totally agreed, and I think the full board does, that we're unanimous against the measure. But, so if a bill is introduced, then we can have, at least maybe on a per pupil basis.
We can.
We can say, you know, that for every student we lose because of this, this is how much we're going to lose as a district, or every student that we gain, like what the impact would be. So once that bill is introduced, we can...
Correct, yes.
Say something.
You know, because there's been a discussion, at least through one avenue, and this might have come up at the legislative forum, it could have come up at a different forum, that maybe the bill's going to be a phase-in approach where it only impacts students that are four years old or younger at this time. So there will be only a funding of voucher for students that would be kindergarteners next year. So anybody else in the system wouldn't be allowed to have that. So, you know, their rationale with that then for the introduction of that bill would be that it doesn't impact the current funding formula or funding level for schools. But it will across the state, and the fear is in a lot of rural areas, especially if, in larger areas where they might take advantage of that, and those kindergarteners that might go to school, the public school, would not otherwise. So there's so many variables right now, and there's not been a lot of open dialogue across the state as far as what is the intent and what will the bill look like. Research, I know we heard about research when we were at the legislative forum at Pete's in December, with some people advocating that there's strong research one way, there is not. There's research, strong research, both sides. And sometimes there's advocates and some research that shows that in some areas vouchers have proven successful, but when you look at the whole body of evidence with the research, that's not the picture that's painted. So again, that's, I think you always have to ask those next level of questions. What is the research? What is the foundational component that provided and gave that research? And you have to continue to dig deeper.
Can I ask, some of the language that's out there includes things like revenue neutral. Is it safe to say that regardless of what it looks like, it wouldn't be revenue neutral for the school district?
It's impossible to create a funding source regardless of where that goes and make it revenue neutral. That's, it's shifting of funds is what it is. And if you shift funds, that's not revenue, it might be expenditure neutral for the state, but it's not revenue neutral for any of the entities.
Right. And outside of the money, you've got, where public schools are held to very specific, when you talk about accountability, it's not just with homeschool families. We are held to very specific standards we have to meet. Even with private education, those schools do not have to meet those. So I don't know that that has even been discussed outside of the finances. You know, if you're going to hold public schools accountable, and our revenue is based on some of those things for Title I funding or things like that, then is that accountability going to be then extended to everyone getting those dollars? I don't think that has been part of what they've discussed. So that is a whole other part of the conversation that has yet to take place. I mean, I would say where people can probably have the most impact is with their vote. Those advocating for students who would benefit from vouchers vastly outnumber the percentage of those students in our legislature. That's part of the problem right now. So that makes it difficult for people who support public education to have sway with some of those legislators because they have such a, the percentages are just very off for that representation.
I would also mention that another bill that we need to keep our eye on, our private charter schools and online learning opportunities that might also impact our student counts.
There are a number of organizations out there that we can get you connected with because it's your voice. It's everyone's voice that has to be heard, so...
We can get you a T-shirt too.
Yeah, we can get you a T-shirt. I can take one right out of my closet.
Let us get you connected to this parent's website because they have a lot of information, and actually, they're located in Des Moines, so it's easy, it's easy for them to get to the capital. They have plans to stop in several communities in the next, I don't know, several...
Six, about six weeks.
Yeah, several weeks.
Cedar Falls doesn't have a date yet, but they are working on a date.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So we'll communicate that, and I'll communicate that information to you so that you'll have it and you can disseminate it.
And I think we would all share with you that your voice really has a more sway with our, especially our local legislators than ours does because we have met with them and they kind of almost look at us as part of the system now, especially for those of who has been on the board for a while. So if you reach out to a legislator, it's going to have much more of an impact than probably our phone call, so, yeah.
That said, I know that ISB does have a draft or possible resolution that boards could pass. You know, if it's something we wanted to consider as a board, I mean, that, you know, an official resolution, we could, we could talk about that.
And UEN, I would assume, probably does too.
They do.
Joyce, that information will be available somewhere that all parents can access or community members who are interested.
Janelle shaking her head, and Dr. Patty is shaking his head too.
We'll put that out probably through our website, and then we can also probably put that into our newsletter as well just to be able to pass along information.
Great.
It's really good, thank you.
It's out there.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Janelle.
Thank you. Yeah, just a real quick communications update for this meeting. If we'll go to the first slide, I just wanted to point out real quick that picture there you see is some third graders that were traveling to Mount Rushmore. It's a pretty neat activity. Our instructional technology coaches are doing a fabulous job integrating many of the things that we have available within the classroom setting. So right before Christmas, they were doing a lot of this in the classroom. Some classes went to DC and New York, Mount Rushmore was this one. So they even had some kindergarteners that traveled to the North Pole, which, if I've never heard or seen such joy. Sometimes it's pretty neat to just have some of those fun things added in at the classroom as well. So I just wanted to give a quick update on that. One of the really great stories we've had come out of our CAPS program this year is Justin Witt. He's a CAPS associate and senior. There was a great article in the Courier that Andrew Wind wrote about this experience that Justin had. I was lucky enough to go along when he presented to the executives from Springs Window Fashions in Wisconsin, and I'll be putting together a video of that and sharing as well. I'm not exactly sure how many people can say they've presented in front of people that have developed a product and told them what's wrong with it and how to fix it, especially as a senior in high school. It was amazing how poised he was and what a great job he did. And the company is very interested in continuing a partnership, possibly with CAPS, definitely with Justin, and basically told him if they didn't ask him for an internship, when he got to the point of being a junior in college, they weren't going to be very happy with him. So it was a great day, a great connection. He actually, he's very interested in 3D printing, so that's what, he's in the technology and engineering strand with CAPS, with Maria Perez. And the broken blind, he's got a fix for it, and 3D printed the piece, it works. And we were sitting around the tables, he was doing his presentation, and one of the people from the company actually said, "Oh, I never thought about actually fixing it," or finding a way to fix it, because they did realize that there was some issues with that specific blind. So they're going to be talking about it in the next couple of weeks and see if it's something that they're going to be integrating into their production, and they'll be letting Justin know. So that was a fabulous experience, great kid, it was really great to be a part of that. Just wanted to give a quick thank you to the young professionals of the Northeast Iowa Regional Board of Realtors. This is the third year in a row, I believe, that they took donations of hats, mittens, gloves, scarves, and then donated them to our schools. So three of the members of that organization are seen there, Ellie Haley and Cole. And then this is Katie Johnston and some students from North Cedar that accepted the donations on behalf of the district. And then we kind of doled those out among different buildings in the district. So it was great to have that partnership with them, so we thank them. Another thank you, if you haven't heard of it, it's McTeachers Night. The McDonald's on First Street here in Cedar Falls partners with North Cedar, and they give a portion of the sales on that night. The teachers work the drive-through, they work the counters, they do absolutely everything right there in McDonald's, and it's, you barely can get through the door because all of the kids want to be there to see their teachers working at McDonald's. But we just wanted to thank the McDonald's on First Street for partnering with North Cedar and giving back to them. We've had three students that are finalists in the Know Your Constitution contest. The students are required to do a test and then write an essay over a constitutional topic, and they'll be honored at a luncheon in Des Moines on the 12th, and then are actually in a drawing for winning a trip to Washington DC. We've had a, I believe last year, we had a student that actually won the trip and got to go with their, one of their teachers to DC. And this will be a big topic possibly for any parents out there that will have a preschooler next year. Our registration for our 2018 preschool will be open for registrations on Friday, January 26th at noon. You can get to the link via our district website, there's a link from the homepage and under the Parents tab. Our preschool program is very popular, we have waiting lists usually between 100 and 120. And so we really encourage parents that are out there that are interested in the program to make sure they put that date on their calendar. And we'll be pushing some information out there through the media and social media as well, so parents can be aware of that. We had some students that were chosen for the district jazz concert, and then many, as you see there on the right, for the Northeast Iowa String Teachers Association Orchestra Festival recently. Both just happened in the last week or so, so congratulations to those students. And very exciting, Tara Eastep, principal at Hanson Elementary, was named a 20 under 40 by the Courier, primarily because Hanson was named a National Blue Ribbon School in 2016, one of just 329 across the country. And they were also received a Breaking Barriers Award to Teaching and Learning by the Iowa Department of Education. So big congratulations to Mrs. Eastep for that award. And then again, these are all the possible options for social media and to follow the district, and then all of our buildings as well. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Janelle?
When is the Grammy announcement?
January 28th, I think.
Twenty-eight. I thought it was the 26th, 27th, 28th, but I couldn't recall, so...
The Grammy week. I haven't heard anything.
Do you get to attend the Grammys?
If you win.
We'll be excited, yeah. Fingers crossed.
The 100 to 120 that we have on the waiting list for preschool, I take it that's the statewide voluntary preschool program? Is there something that's limiting us from expanding that? Is that a space issue or a...?
Yeah, space and capacity. And that's where, right now, we are, going into next year, we are hoping to be able to utilize more of Aldridge with some of our preschool programming and not have to pay rent at the Southdale Center, so that's something that we're still working on. So right now, it's space. And you have to have the space that have the square footage needs, the restroom needs, the outdoor fence playground spaces that are just specifically for the school, and it just compounds with...
I will add that we are going to add one section at Lincoln next year. We used to have a preschool at Lincoln, and we had to move that to Cedar Heights a few years ago because of space. Next year, we'll be opening one at Lincoln again.
Thank you, Janelle. Thank you. Moving on to item E on the agenda, the secretary's financial report. Mr. Nysker.
Well, again, I have the honor of following a lot of good news with a little bit of boring information. So we'll run through the financials for the month of December, and I'll remind everybody that these are cash numbers, not accrual numbers, but it kind of gives you an idea where we stand halfway through the school year. So if we wanted to fire it up, there we go. First off, we have the general fund. You can see a little over 3.6 million in revenue and 4.6 in expenditures, so our ending balance is 7,463,000. And you can see that that's about one and a half million below where it was a year ago. It looks like we're going to pretty much consistently run in that range for the remainder of the school year, maybe catch up a little bit with the second half, property tax comes in with our increased cash reserve levy for this year, but we will be running a little behind. In the management fund, you can see revenue and expenditures for the month, and our ending balance is 777,000. In the capital projects fund, revenue of 23,000, that's all interest. We did cash in one CD, that's what boosts the interest up for the month. And we also received a payment from the Cedar, city of Cedar Falls for our co-share on some expenses associated with the grading work that took place out at the new elementary school site. And then our expenditures for the month of 1.88 million for the three projects, and then you can see our ending balance of eighteen, just under 18.2 million dollars. And the statewide once-in-sales tax fund, there's the revenue for a month. Again, the vast majority of that is interest. We did not receive an actual payment this month. In December, like I said, they seem to be paying us twice one month, zero times the next month, and so we're kind of working through that. Expenditures were pretty small, 28,000 for the month, and you can see our ending balance is just over 8 million. And of that, just as a reminder, 7 million of it is basically undesignedated, and then we have the 995,000 we have to hold back for the Series 2013 revenue bonds that the district sold. And the physical plant and equipment levy, there you can see revenue and expenditures for the month, so we have an ending balance of 3.16 million dollars. And debt service levy, you'll note we have a revenue of 66,000, that's mostly interest with a little bit of principal, excuse me, mostly sales tax or property tax receipts with a little bit of interest. But the big thing is, I won't note the expenditure, that's a first payment of the year for both the two revenue bonds as well as the general obligation bond. So we made our first payment for that for Aldridge Elementary, and you can see we have a balance of 1.4 million approximately. And the student activity fund, pretty much a normal December month with just over 600,000 in the bank. Trust and agency account, again, pretty normal activity for this time of year. You'll note the negative cash balance, well, it's a darn timing thing when you have holidays in the end of December. We're really not negative, but it's just, it's a timing issue. There's money in the investment account that way more and cover that, and we have multiple funds within one checking account, so it's not a problem from that end. It's just, it was a little bit of a timing issue. So we ended up with 204,000 dollars at the end of December. If we go to the food service enterprise account, you'll see revenue and expenditures. I wouldn't get too excited about that expenditure amount. Again, that's a timing issue. We had some supplies, foodstuffs, as we start up the month of January, they came in right at the end of the month. And I know our actual expenditures were a little bit more than that, but they didn't get run through. So you'll see that correction here in, at the end of January. But 676,000 fund balance, as you can see, is a big improvement over it was, where it was one year ago. And in coffee shop fund, pretty quiet for the month, just a little over 7,300 in the bank. And in the River Hills Consortium, we first started seeing a larger amount of tuition payments coming in, and you'll see that that balance is 482,000. And I'll remind the board that that all goes out and is paid to AEA for the operation of the River Hills program. And with that, I would entertain any questions that the board would have.
Any questions for Doug regarding the financial report? Hearing none, then the financial report will be placed on file for audit. Moving on to F on the agenda, approval of the change order for Aldridge Elementary. Mr. Nysker.
That would be me, and we have a PowerPoint on that. We're going to kind of combine a couple of things. Mr. Channer from Structure Architects is with us also this evening, and we may have some questions. If you have any questions, he, the resident expert is here to answer those. But I wanted to kind of give a little bit of an update as to where we are at Aldridge. These pictures were taken right during Christmas break. And this is the south side of the building. So if you were to drive up Arbor's Drive from the south, and that would be the facade of what you would see, of the elevation of the building. The dirt that you see in front of is basically going to be the south parking lot or the bus loading area, as well as the staff parking area. This also is a picture of the south entrance, so you can see the gymnasium's on the right. And where the scissors left is, that's basically where the doors for the south entrance to the building will be, so you can see where that's at. This is a picture of what will eventually be the new kindergarten, pre-kindergarten area. And it also doubles as a storm shelter for the district. And so you can see there's a lot of, it begins to give you a little bit of an idea of how well that area is built so that it will handle a significant tornado event. Hopefully, that will never happen. And this is also, this didn't come out as well, but this is a typical classroom. This happens to be on the 1-2-3 wing, or the south wing, and it's the area where there's the two classrooms with the folding door in the middle. So it kind of gives you an idea of what that's looking like. And the last feature I have of Aldridge, I'm standing in the heart looking into the media center, or I guess it's called the learning center. This old man's having a hard time with his new terminology. So you can kind of see where we're at with all the progress with that. Here's our change order request, and we talked about... Here's our change order request, and we talked about this when we accepted the bids quite a while back. We accepted an alternate for a second reinjection well for the geothermal system. The engineers and the contractors have done their work with the supply well, as well as the reinjection well, and they have determined we do not need the reinjection well, and so we would like to have the board approve a deduct of $175,000 on the total project, so basically we're saying we don't want to accept alternate number two now.
All right, thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the change order for Aldridge?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the construction change order for a credit of $175,000 to delete the alternate number two, additional reinjection well for Aldridge Elementary School.
Thank you, Jeff. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments for Doug? Or anyone? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we can go on, and we'll talk a little bit about Orchard Hill. I think, there we go. Again, these pictures were taken during Christmas break, and this is, you're sort of looking southwest if you're on Round Street, headed south towards Green Hill. You can, what you're seeing there is the masonry work for the gymnasium, and you can also see the steel work for the cafeteria. It's amazing what the contractors have done since this picture was taken. I was out there today, and it doesn't, it's so much more, if I hadn't sent the PowerPoint in this morning, I'd have updated it with a new photograph, but the contractors are really working very hard, and it's very, very nice to see. This is from the playground or on the west side of the building, looking back towards it. What you're seeing there is the larger brick with the green on the top of it would be the backside of the gymnasium, and then the wall that you see on the left is basically the north wall where the music area is going to be for the building. And then here's administrative office area, you can see what there's, they've all had to steel up and footings are poured, and they're continuing to work very diligently on that. We have a change order request this month, and it's for four different items. We've made some economizing on the project, I guess would be the best way to describe it, and we're going to reduce, request reducing the size of the front canopy. The canopy was going to basically run from the north parking lot all the way to the front entrance, and so we would request that we would reduce that in size somewhat. You can see that's a pretty significant amount of money to do that. We had some bump outs, window bump outs and some other small canopies throughout the whole new addition, and you can see that that reduction would be just over $20,000. We're changing some spiral duct to duck sock. If you're familiar with, if you want to know what duck sock is, if you've been in the high school gym, look up at the red socks going, ducts going across, that's duck sock, so to give you an exact what that is. And then the Chauver well is recommending a change in the well piping for the geothermal system. Chauver basically does all the, has done all the well drilling for us for the, I can't even remember how many last projects we've had with them, and if they're recommending a $10,000 save, I would highly recommend that we accept that. We've had Modus look at that as well, and they concurred that it would be a good thing for the district to do to accept that. So with that, we can see it's just $102,893 worth of savings on the project.
So the canopy will be similar to Hanson's canopy when everything's said and done, so it was more of a kind of reduction in size and scope, but it's still going to be a large canopy, similar to what, and again, at the entrance of Hanson.
I can't visualize the bump outs. Help me there, Dan, please.
Good evening. The bump outs were at the west wing, the west classroom wing, where we have the five, six classrooms, and two of the rooms, one on, two on the south, two on the north, that are separated by a folding partition. We had little reading nooks in there, very similar to what we're doing at Aldridge. There was an opportunity to save some dollars there, as well as the canopies were somewhat shading windows on the south side, not so much on the north side, but it was, on the north side, it was to match up aesthetically to the way the building was being put together, but that's what it pertains to.
In essence, we've kind of smoothed out the wall, so instead of having a little bump out that's that wide for kind of a little reading nook, we can do that with some of our furniture arrangements.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the change order for Orchard Hill?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the construction change order for construction changes to Orchard Hill Elementary for a total reduction in costs of $102,893.
Thank you, Sasha. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to item H.
And before we move on to the last item, and we've got a couple of pictures of North Cedar, we don't want to not talk a little bit about that. Again, these were taken between Christmas and New Year's, and you can see there's the steel coming up for the south addition, so that can kind of give you a scope or an idea of the size of it, and then as you can also see, the street area and where the old front entrance used to be, is, we're trying to put some footings in and some foundation walls, and the weather has sort of slowed us down a little bit, but we've been assured by the contractors that, that starting tomorrow, they'll be able to get back to work and continue the progress on the project. So that would be, I think that's the last of the pictures I have.
All right. Thank you. Moving on now to item H, approval of the 84-passenger transit bus bids.
And we do have one last PowerPoint on this, if we can get it to come up. There we go. And the district took bids for school buses, again, as we continue to rotate our bus fleet. I kind of wanted to go through a little bit, just to remind the public what we're doing here, where we requested to purchase two new 84-passenger school buses, general specifications, they're a transit style, so they don't, the engine is basically, sits underneath the driver in the front. They're diesel engines with automatic transmissions, and then we asked for additional costs for front air ride suspension and rear cameras. And of course, the district and body are all required to meet certain requirements from the Iowa Department of Education, and of course, our specifications mean or exceed all of that. So we are going to trade two buses in, as you can see what we have to trade on there. I think it would be very safe to say that we do, when we trade a bus in, it's pretty much at the end of its useful life, so those buses have been dedicated servants for the district, but it's time for them to go on to greener pastures or some other type of service. So for the public's information, this is a summary sheet that I submit to the board. What we do is we go through, and we have, we summarize every specification or every spec item on the bid, and then compile that information so that the board can see did an individual bidder meet that specification or not. And you can see in all cases, with one very minor exception, that they did. And so we'll go on to the next slide, and then you can see we have two bids that came in, and the low quote of the two bids is from School Bus Sales in Waterloo, Iowa, after trade of $190,412. That is slightly less than what we budgeted for these two buses, so we're very happy to see that. And that does include the air ride suspension and the rear camera backup. So it would be our recommendation to have the board approve the bid from School Bus Sales, and of course, this payment for this will come out of the 2018-19 physical plant and equipment levy, it is a part of our 10-year master plan for the capital. One other thing, as a reminder to the board, we've been talking about a situation where we need to add buses to our fleet, and so you'll be seeing us come up to you with a recommendation probably in March to purchase a couple of leased buses, we've done that in the past. They've worked out very, very well for the district, and that will help expand our fleet and hopefully reduce some of our charter bus costs that we've been incurring due to the great participation we've been having from students attending extracurricular programs without the district.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the 84-passenger transit bus bid?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the bid from School Bus Sales of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $192,412 for an 84-passenger transit bus with air ride suspension and rear backup camera.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments regarding the buses?
I just would, just to comment, that I'm pleased that this is a Waterloo business and that we're supporting local business here, you know, it just worked out that way with the bid, but that pleases me.
I would agree.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And thank you for everything.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, moving on to Superintendent's report.
Yes, just a few items. Reminder that on January 10th, we have the Administrative Council Board Retreat. January 22nd is our next board meeting, and at that time, we'll have a local option sales tax update and just the impacts. We'll also have our audit report, as well as some of our early financial indicators as well. Facility update, Mr. Nysker did a great job talking about the three programs or the three projects that we have going on at this time, but we also know that we have a need with our high school building, and over the course of the next three to four weeks, we're going to start having some discovery weeks that's going to really focus on what does education look like in the future? What are the expectations and what are the challenges as we look over the course of the next 50 years, and what do we need to do to help prepare and make sure that we have the facilities necessary to meet those needs? Legislative update, there are a couple of items that I had down, one was the vouchers, just to make sure that we're watching that process. The one cent sales tax extension, which is, again, one of those components that we know are extremely important for us locally as well, to continue to keep our eye on, to see the direction that goes. We also know that there was an email that Iowa Association of School Boards sent out roughly about a month ago, that talked about some of the maybe misinformation that's out there with funding. It showed that over the course of the last 11 years, that schools had received about a 20% increase in funding, but that accounted for a lot of dollars that are categorical funding, as well as dollars that are generated locally through additional levies. So when you talk about teacher leadership and compensation, you talk about teacher salary supplemental dollars, you talk about even local bonds that were generated through 60% supermajority, those were included in those funds. So when you talk about expenditure neutral or revenue neutral, that was not even in the ballpark. So when you take out even the categoricals, it was like a 4.5, 4.6% additional dollars over the course, total, over the course of the last 10 to 11 years, but that still includes locally generated revenue, or excuse me, bonds that were general obligation bonds, so those aren't state dollars. So I think that's important to note. And then also, I know that there has been discussion about IPers, that's another component, as we talked vouchers and different advocacy, that's something that has come up, so I think it's something that we just need to keep our finger on and pulse on, because that can impact education and certainly attracting and retaining those individuals to our state that we know are so vital for educating our students each and every day.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Patty in his report? Moving on to questions or comments or concerns from board members.
I just wanted to say, on Friday, Andy Joyce, I, and Dan attended the CAPS final presentation for the, it's engineering and technology, engineering, what do you call the three, the strand, right? The engineering strand at Viking Pump, and it was a, it was a great presentation, I just wanted to thank the students, Anne Maria Perez, who is their, their teacher for that, and Viking Pump, actually, as well. They've really dedicated a lot of resources to this program, they even built an area in their facility there for our students to meet and everything, and it's just very impressive, and we really appreciate, I think I speak on behalf of the board, we appreciate everything that they've done, so thanks to all of those that were involved in that.
And we should have gotten, everybody should have gotten an email about a open house at Viking Pump on Thursday.
Correct. Yeah.
Yep.
I would also mention that for those of us that are concerned with what's going on in the legislation concerning education, on February 10th, there is a legislative forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters on that Saturday, and that will be at the Central Rivers Area Education Agency.
Jeff, I think it's the AAUW that's sponsoring that.
Thank you.
Okay. Which is the American Association of University Women, I believe.
Okay.
Yep.
Since Eric said a thank you to Viking Pump, I think it'd be remiss without saying, as well as a strand partner, we have Mil Race for our communication and design, they host those students in that location, and certainly you and I at Chandler Education for education students, because those, those partners are so vital for those experiences those students are receiving.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's been moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for being here.
Thank you.